I'm glad to be here to supply the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I assume so.
The motion is made in second over your favor.
Aye.
Okay, we move on to new business. Uh, first hour will be the Town of Lakeview RA presentation by Elaine Howard. Nick, are you still there?
I am.
Okay, you're up.
Okay. Um, thank you very much. Somehow when I was sharing my screen, I can't see you anymore. But I know Nick Popenek, who is working with me, probably can see you. So if anybody has any questions, Nick will be able to see. Um, so my name is Elaine Howard of Elaine Howard Consulting. I have been working on this project with Nick Popenek of Tiberius Solutions for the Town of Lakeview. So it's very nice to meet you all and we'll walk through the work that we've been doing. Uh, why, the way our slideshow works usually, if you have a question, it will be answered as we move through the presentation. So maybe waiting to the end to ask questions works best. Uh, and then we can go back and look at anything else on the way if we need to. So first, we're going to talk a little bit about tax increment financing and what it is and how it works. Tax increment financing is an economic development tool, but also a housing incentive and development tool. It is unique in that it is a financing tool, but also has a plan that includes projects that can be undertaken, is used to address blighting influences in specific areas, and it functions on increases in property tax revenues in property and in tax increment areas. A tax increment area may only be established by the town. They have the authority to establish the area. It provides for a division of property taxes and it impacts the overlapping taxing districts like the county uh, and the city itself. It is not an increase in individuals' property tax rates or their overall property taxes. There is no impact on property taxpayers. It's limited by what's called maximum indebtedness. Maximum indebtedness is the total amount of money that may be spent on projects and programs in an urban renewal area over the life of the urban renewal area. It can be limited by a duration provision, but that is not a requirement in Oregon. And it provides funding for capital projects. Use, uh, overhead and maintenance are usually not calculated in the funding for the area. There is sometimes just the administration allow, uh, but not, not maintenance. This little graphic just shows, uh, in, in a graphic form how urban renewal works. We all pay our property taxes and when we pay those taxes, they go to regular taxing jurisdictions like the city and the county and the school district. As those property taxes increase through either in Oregon, a limited 3% appreciation or substantial improvements, those property taxes without an urban renewal area continue going to all the regular taxing jurisdictions. However, when you create an urban renewal area in a portion of the city, the increased property tax revenues just within that area go to an established urban renewal agency to do work within the urban renewal area itself. That urban renewal agency is typically the town council itself. Some other cities add other members to that, but we typically recommend that it be the town council itself. Again, those property tax revenue increases are only from the specific urban renewal area, not from every property within the city. This shows another graphic of how urban renewal works in a little different context. At the time an urban renewal area is established, the assessor establishes what's called a frozen base assessed value. You can see this in the blue bar across the bottom. That is the total assessed value of all the properties within the urban renewal area at the time an urban renewal plan is adopted. Just for clarity, urban renewal and tax increment in Oregon are interchangeable. So sometimes we use the terminology urban renewal. Sometimes cities would rather we use the terminology tax increment financing. The statutory language says urban renewal and what shows up on people's tax bills, it says urban renewal. But a lot of, uh, cities or some counties have urban renewal areas. Decide they prefer the terminology, uh, tax increment financing. So those two are interchangeable and you can, if you decide to move ahead developing a plan, tell us which language you want us to use. At the end of a timeframe of urban renewal, there are sometimes shared property tax revenues that go to the different taxing districts. Those are shared because the amount of revenues projected meets certain thresholds that are established in the statute when you have to share with the taxing districts. The feasibility study that we have done does not project that there would be shared revenues, uh, for this district. At the time, a tax increment district expires, there is increased revenue for all the different taxing districts because of the new assessed value that is created. In addition to the assessed value that's created, if you're successful in providing incentives for new housing development, you have a lot of new housing, um, in the downtown area. If you are successful, you have improved conditions and renovated, uh, buildings and facilities. A tax increment area functions on an income source, which is that yearly property tax collections based on the growth within the area, the boundary. It has expenses, which are projects, programs, and administration. And it has a spending limit, which is capped by the maximum indebtedness. And again, that is the total amount of money and it gets established at the time that you prepare an urban renewal plan. The process for adopting an urban renewal or TIP district is you are required to do some public outreach. Um, you may consider establishing an advisory committee. You need to confirm and refine a TIP district boundary. You identify projects for funding. You agree on expectations for the length of a plan and the maximum indebtedness. We present, uh, options to you for you to review. You do outreach to taxing districts regarding the foregone revenue. And then there are required meetings and hearings. That include the tax increment agency, the planning commission, uh, the county, and the town council. I'm going to hand this over to Nick now and he will present and then I'll tie it up at the end.
Thanks Elaine. So the previous slides talked generally about how urban renewal works um, and the restrictions and limitations on it. These next few slides will get into the details of the specific feasibility analysis that we conducted for the Town of Lakeview. Um, and this feasibility analysis was largely financial. Uh, that's what my firm specializes in, is public finance analysis. So we'll go through the forecasts of how much financial capacity a district like this could, um, create for the town. Um, other analysis, political and, and understanding technically which projects you might want to fund um, and the timeframe in which you might want to have been funded. All of that would be subsequent analysis that would need to occur if the town decided to move forward within urban renewal area. The boundary on the screen here, um, was what was created for the purposes of this initial technical analysis. And then the boundary was really developed through two parallel processes. We worked with Michelle and other key stakeholders to identify areas of the town, um, and unincorporated areas adjacent to the town that might be beneficial for a residential, uh, urban renewal area. One that was really emphasizing construction of new homes and rehabilitation of existing house and stock. So you see a number of large undeveloped areas on this map, as well as some stretches of existing residential, um, that were included for that purpose. Uh, in addition to the residential area, we've also included a large section of commercial zone property. That commercial zone property was identified in conversations, um, with Lakeview community partners. Uh, and I think Ginger is here, um, in the second half of today's meeting, talk more about their downtown planning efforts. Those properties were identified based on where there is opportunity for substantial new construction to occur and where there's a need for significant new investments in the community, including transportation investments. The, the boundary that we came up with exceeds the statutory limits for how large an urban renewal area could be. So any urban renewal area is limited to no more than 25% of the town's acreage and assessed value. This map that's shown here is currently 23.5% of the town's acreage. So it just barely fits under that limit, but it's 37% of the town's assessed value. So if the town were to proceed with establishing an urban renewal area, this boundary would need to be revised downward. Um, ideally, you'd be cutting out properties that have a large amount of value, but aren't likely to be developed in the near future. And some preliminary conversations have already occurred with staff and other key stakeholders uh, about potential properties that could be removed going forward. The, while it's true that the 25% limit exists, um, just as a side note, the, the town may decide it wants to pursue a boundary that's significantly smaller than that. Nothing says your boundary has to take up the full 25% limit that's allowed to you. Um, but for the purposes of this analysis, we are just looking at what areas you might want to include, recognizing that ultimately, if the town doesn't move forward, it will move forward with something smaller and with less value. This slide shows the forecast of potential tax increment revenues that could be generated from the boundary shown on the previous slide. The gray area in the background show those tax dollars generated in nominal dollars. Uh, in other words, the actual amount that would be collected over time. The blue bars adjust for the cost of inflation over time. And so you can see as you get 10, 20, 30 years down the road, while your annual tax revenues might be substantial, four, five, or six million dollars a year, the actual financial capacity, when adjusted for inflation, sort of peaks around $2 million per year in this area. The growth that we have, um, forecast here comes from, uh, conversations with property owners in town, as well as with other key stakeholders at the, at the city and, or at the town, and with the Lakeview community partners. Specifically, we assume that there'd be steady residential construction taking place here. Uh, roughly 20 new homes per year over the life of this area and renovations to existing homes, uh, about 10 per year. And on the commercial side of things, we really looked at a handful of key redevelopment sites that could occur. The largest of which is the Lakeview Lumber property, um, that could potentially develop over the course of the next 15 years with roughly $1 million in assessed value coming on the tax rolls from the whole buildup of that site. And so the next slide shows, um, the same forecast of annual tax revenues, but shows how financing could be used to help frontload when those dollars become available. So rather than spending money as the dollars, um, come in on an annual basis, urban renewal gives a community the ability to incur debt and help fund larger projects sooner. And so this is a fairly typical pattern that we see in other communities where periodically we incur new debt, either through bonds or through bank loans. And that would allow you to fund, as you can see on the chart here, projects that total between three and six million dollars once every few years. This approach is really helpful, um, for helping to have analytic projects that occur early in the life of the district that are essential for jumpstarting the new project construction that you'd like to see here. However, when you do incur debt, now you have debt service that needs to be paid every year, including interest. So in the interim years, you do see your annual, uh, financial capacity decrease for that reason. The next slide, um, gets into some of the nitty gritty numbers of the financial forecasts. So over a potential 30-year district, um, we show that this area could generate close to $90 million in total tax load. Uh, again, this area is larger than you would likely want it to be, larger than it's allowed to be by statute right now. And there's no, um, guarantee that you would need to have a district around for 30 years. Some communities choose to have shorter timeframes for their urban renewal areas. Both of those things reduce the financial capacity from what's shown here. Maximum indebtedness Elaine mentioned is a required number by statute that has to be included and adopted urban renewal plan. Um, without financing, it's the same thing as the total amount of taxes that you would collect. But with financing, it's a smaller number because some of your tax dollars aren't going to pay the principal amount of projects, but they're going to pay for interest on the debt that you incurred. And then, once you account for inflation, uh, again, knowing that some of these projects won't be built for years or decades in the future, that, um, ma- maximum indebtedness winds up looking at a smaller number. This is really your true financial capacity and we're showing it's in the order of magnitude of between 40 and 50 million dollars. Again, it's just, it's a little smaller if you do financing, but that financing option would allow you to fund more projects sooner. Uh, as Elaine mentioned, the urban renewal works without increasing anyone's taxes. Um, so the, the property owners in Lakeview would not pay more in taxes in order to generate these dollars, but it is a division of existing taxes. So all of the taxing districts that are currently imposing taxes in the Town of Lakeview, the growth in assessed value within this area would be foregone from those property tax districts for the next 20 or 30 years and would instead go to fund projects specifically in that area. This shows the total, uh, amount of those foregone revenues, again, totaling nearly 90 million in the scenario that we ran. Although again, as I mentioned, it is, it would need to be a smaller district in order to comply with statutes. You may choose for it to be even smaller still to minimize some of these impacts to other taxing districts. And you could choose for a shorter duration, which again would minimize these impacts even further, um, while limiting your financial capacity. You'll notice that the Town of Lakeview is the largest impacted entity here. Uh, roughly a third of the total amount of taxes will be foregone from the town's general fund. Uh, the county general fund would be the next largest impacted district. The Lakeview school district shows a significant jump there, but there is an important aspect to note. And that is that in the state of Oregon, uh, schools are all funded equally by the state on a per student basis. And so anything that impacts local property tax collections, including urban renewal, winds up having an offset in the amount of funding from the state's school fund. So there would be no direct impact to schools. They would continue to receive the same amount of funding that they would otherwise. Um, but these are true dollar amounts shown here in terms of foregone revenue. The hope with urban renewal is that you're using it to invest in projects and stimulate private development that couldn't happen without that urban renewal investment. And so then, even though you're foregoing dollars, those dollars never would have existed without that urban renewal investment being done. Uh, the next couple of slides illustrate this concept. So this is showing the current property tax revenues that go to the Town of Lakeview today. A little less than a million dollars a year. Um, and if that were to increase to 3% per year over time, it's just, oh, sorry, yeah. 3% per year over time, that shows that slow gradual, um, upward trend that would eventually get you to 2 million a year, et cetera. Though inflation would be taken a bite out of that, of course. Um, the next slide shows the potential impact of urban renewal, where everything in blue would be the tax dollars going to the urban renewal area. However, uh, the hope would be that, that those are dollars that are above and beyond what would have existed without urban renewal. And so even though it's a large chunk of revenue going to the urban renewal area, those dollars may not have ever existed in the community if you didn't have urban renewal to make the investments to stimulate these projects. And the next slide compares the actual tax revenues that the town would receive with and without urban renewal under that scenario. And so you can see that while the urban renewal area is, um, resulting in slightly less revenue to the town, that is offset in the later years, well, once the district closes down and all of that money comes back on the tax rolls. And again, I will reiterate that this scenario showing that there's relatively little difference in the amount of revenue that the town receives. That is true if the time that the urban renewal area is investing in results in new construction that couldn't have occurred without that urban renewal investment. Um, it's, that, that's how you have a successful urban renewal area. That's a responsible use of the tool. Uh, Elaine and I have done this long enough, um, for dozens of jurisdictions and hundreds of urban renewal areas that we have seen communities do this very well. We've seen other communities where they haven't done a great job of it. And their urban renewal area has largely just captured growth that was already going to recur. Um, and in that case, the amount of foregone revenue to those districts is more of a direct loss. It really is diverting dollars, um, that would have otherwise gone to the, the county, the town, et cetera. Um, one last complicated financial technical issue that I want to raise, um, that we stumbled upon as we were working on this urban renewal financial analysis, is the issue of property tax compression. So, uh, back in the 90s, Measure 5 that was approved by voters in Oregon established limits on the amount of property taxes that could be paid for any individual property. And that limit, uh, for general government uses, including the town, the county, urban renewal, is $10 per thousand of the real market value of your home. Um, our tax rates that we impose actually tend to be above that $10 limit. They're above it because there's a disconnect between real market value and assessed value in the state of Oregon's property tax system. And so in a lot of places, the real market values are substantially above assessed values. And that allows folks to impose tax rates that are higher than these limits because when you compare it to its actual real market value, you're still below that threshold. Um, that's not the case in Lakeview. And in Lakeview, we see a lot of real market values that are very close to their assessed values. And that's been resulting in a significant amount of compression. In the most recent year, 14% of all the property tax dollars imposed by the Town of Lakeview were lost due to compression losses on those individual properties. Um, and one thing we observed through this process is that if the town were to do something to stimulate an increase in its real market values of property, to really transform those market conditions and result in a growth in property values, that will, uh, alleviate your compression problem. And that means that for every tax dollar that you're imposing, you'll be receiving a higher and higher percentage of that. And urban renewal is one powerful tool that could help you accomplish this. By investing in a vibrant downtown, um, as well as investing in having quality residential homes for people to live in, you could make the Town of Lakeview a more attractive community that could, uh, spur that growth in real market values that can result in an increase in the amount of taxes that you actually collect based on what you impose. Um, the next few slides show us an example of this. So here we're looking at an hypothetical tax bill. These are all the, the applicable tax rates that apply in town. And this is for a property that would have a real market value of $200,000 and an assessed value of $190,000. This is a fairly typical home in the area. Um, with this, a property could pay no more than $2,000 a year in general government taxes. Uh, Elaine, the next slide shows that the amount that we're imposing here is actually $2,500 a year, so it's above that limit. The next slide shows how compression, um, is implemented to reduce all of those taxes. So all the general government, uh, agencies have their bills reduced proportionately, in this case by 21%, until it's low enough that their total amount of taxes paid for general government fits within that limit of $2,000. If this home were to have something happen that would increase its real market value, this example now increases to $225,000 of real market value. Now the Measure 5 limit is $2,250 per year for that home instead of 2,000. That means that this home can now pay more money to all the governments that are, you know, implementing taxes in the area. And the amount of compression goes down. So it went down to 21% of the taxes for the town being lost to 11% in this one example. Um, and so anything in this community that can help spur an increase in real market value is going to have a direct, um, correlation on increased property tax revenues to the town, to the county, to all these other local governments that are currently suffering compression losses. Um, and with that, we are wrapping up here. Uh, Elaine, I can't remember, you were going to handle these implications here if you want to be the one to.
Go ahead and roll to the end.
Alright, so the key implications from our technical analysis at this point in time is that urban renewal has the capacity to fund perhaps up to $48 million of projects in the community. Um, though again, we think that a smaller boundary, um, one would be necessary for statutory reasons, but may also be something you want to explore, um, in terms of minimizing your, your foregone revenue. Financing, um, has the ability to increase the short-term capacity of the urban renewal area, but it's the trade-off of decreasing the long-term capacity. Um, still, that's an approach that most jurisdictions do take in order to help frontload those projects and really have catalytic, um, effect on new construction. Uh, it's important to note that only the town has the authority to establish, uh, urban renewal area or a TIP district. Uh, this isn't something that the local community or, or nonprofit organization can do, but this is something that only the town can do. Um, so you are in the driver's seat for whether or not to move forward with the district and where that district boundary will be. Pursuing both downtown and residential areas inside of a TIP district or urban renewal area that would require cuts to the boundary. Um, so right now, as we said, it's too large, has too much value. So you would need to look carefully at what properties you want to pull out and really prioritize where you want to invest. Um, and using TIP will help create new housing opportunities. So we know that that's been a challenge in the community and, and, um, TIP has certainly be, been used in other communities like yours to provide incentives to correctly invest in new housing. When we look at our forecasts, um, here in terms of the amount of new construction we're assuming, it might seem ambitious, um, for the Town of Lakeview compared to how much or how little construction is taking place in recent years. But it does appear reasonable to us when we look at, again, the other hundred urban renewal districts across the state that we've been involved in over the last 20 years. Um, these are not high in the sky numbers. This is a really reasonable amount of construction activity if you have a tool in place to help defend it by it. Uh, important to note that TIP revenues do start slowly and go over time. So if the town does move forward within urban renewal area or a TIP district, um, it's not an overnight, uh, cure-all where everything gets better immediately. But it does give you a tool that gradually becomes stronger and stronger over time to help invest in more projects. Compression loss is a significant issue in the Town of Lakeview, but TIP has the potential to reduce it by increasing the real market values of properties in town. And foregone revenues from affected taxing districts would be significant if you pursue this tool. But schools are not impacted from that equation, so they will continue to receive the full amount of funding for students. Lastly, just to point out that the analysis we've done so far is a financial analysis. Um, this is not an evaluation of social impact on diversity, equity, and inclusion. Um, we also haven't done an analysis, uh, through public outreach and find out what projects the community is most interested in. Those types of evaluations would, would take place later on if the town chooses to pursue this tool.
So I'll jump in to close out to look at a potential timeline if you wanted to move ahead. It typically takes from six to eight months to actually create an urban renewal plan. It starts with, uh, creating an urban renewal agency. That has to be created with a non-emergency ordinance that doesn't go into effect until 30 days after it is passed. During that time, you can start working on a, an urban renewal plan, tax increment plan. Um, then you will decide what a boundary would be, what projects you would want in the plan, what you would want to establish for the maximum indebtedness, how long you would like the plan to go. You would do that hopefully with stakeholder input so that you involve the community so that they are supportive of your plan. Sometime in March, you could have Sometime in March, you could have an agency meeting for review of a draft plan. If they approve that, um, then you would have a county review. They do not, they, if there are unincorporated properties, they will also have to approve the plan. You'll have a planning commission meeting, uh, required meeting for considering the conformance to your comprehensive plan. You have a time period of forty-five days where you have to send a notification to all of the taxing districts that you are looking at an urban renewal tax increment plan. And they have a right to respond to you. If, and if they do respond in writing, the city council, town council does have to, uh, respond to their specific requests. The town council would have a hearing sometime in May for a first reading of an ordinance. And then in the next month, have the second reading of the ordinance and the plan would be in effect in July. This is about as quickly as the development of a plan can go. Since you have already done a feasibility study, it's not unrealistic that this could move ahead this quickly. In any case, you have a couple of months of leeway in this plan. You, if you do move forward in the next year, you would want a plan adopted by September first so that it goes into effect by October first. And that is because the assessor certifies a new frozen base of properties on October first. Um, and you would lose that three percent increase that would have happened if you had put your plan in effect before that date. So when we talk to clients at this timeframe and if they know they want to move ahead, we advise them that the best timeframe to do this in is to get a plan adopted by September first. Um, if, if that, if they think that there isn't going to be any growth and that doesn't matter, the next important date is to get it adopted by December first. If you do not have it adopted by December first and the timeframe goes into January of twenty twenty-three, you lose an entire year of when you actually start receiving money in your urban renewal tax increment agency. So the timelines, uh, are important. And just wrap that up, um, for Nick and me. And I am going to stop sharing unless there is a specific slide somebody wants to look at. So maybe, uh, Michelle, if you could see if anybody wants me to go back to the boundary or any of Nick's graphic slides?
I've got a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, Nick, is it, could you give us a, give me a couple towns that, that have this that are kind of like Lakeview?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, we have worked in, uh, I don't know, sixty jurisdictions in Oregon. Um, many of them smaller towns, um, John Day, um, Madras, uh, Lafayette. Um, Elaine, what are some of the other ones we've worked on? We've got, there's certain.
Catsonville, Talent, um, Phoenix, Clamapals, Grants Pass, um.
Gotcha.
Brookings. Tuesday.
Okay.
We try to say if you go from Pendleton to Clamapals to Brookings to Astoria, we, we work there and everywhere in between.
Yeah, I think, I think the, the name urban renewal often, um, has a, has a connotation that this must be something that's only done in big cities. Um, but in reality, I think it's, it's a really powerful tool, especially for smaller towns and cities. Because the big cities might have other ways to give resources to fund projects. But in smaller towns, there's a garden, a lot of other funding options out there.
Um, another question I have is say, on that cumulative thirty-year impact taxing on the taxing districts, like just say the health district is three million one hundred and forty thousand dollars. So if, if we say, okay, we're going to do a TIP, do they get less money? Yeah, I mean, that money's got to come from somewhere. Does it come from all these other, like, two, two percent less or whatever?
Yes, so they would, for, every dollar that the TIP district receives is a dollar that's not going to the overlapping taxing districts. And they're all impacted proportionately based on their tax rate. So the town has a much higher tax rate than the, uh, health district. So you'd be having more foregone revenue than them. But everybody shares in that cause equally. Um, and that is where we get to that, that sort of key defining principle that this tool, um, should be used responsibly to focus on investments where you're generating tax dollars that wouldn't exist without the projects you're investing. Um, and so even though in that case, the health district and the town are still foregoing dollars, um, those dollars wouldn't have existed if you didn't invest in it.
Yeah, we could, yeah, we could build a couple houses and make that, you know.
Right.
Gotcha.
And an important thing to understand is that they don't lose any tax dollars they presently have. So if, if they have a budget of X million this year and you adopt an urban renewal area, that budget of X million will not go down because of urban renewal. What they lose is only that amount of growth on those properties within the urban renewal area and any increment, any property taxes off of new construction in the urban renewal area. So they don't lose existing revenues.
So, so they would stay the same for thirty years?
Well, they would stay the same for the properties inside the area. And they would continue to grow from all of the tax, tax base that they have that's outside of the area. So, um, you know, I haven't done an analysis to see what the exact jurisdiction of the health district is. But we know for the town of Lakeview as an example, um, let's say you chose to use the full twenty-five percent of the town acreage. Um, you would have three-quarters of your tax base that would be completely unaffected by this and would continue to grow with inflation or with appreciation and any other new construction that takes place out there. You would have one-quarter of your tax base that stayed at the level that, that day. Um, where any growth in that area gets captured by the urban renewal area. And then once the district closes down, then you would receive benefits. Yeah, so, so, uh, every jurisdiction would continue to see growth in property tax revenues, but they would not see as rapid a growth in, in revenues. And if, or if there were a lot of new construction taking place inside this boundary, they wouldn't receive the benefits of that new construction until the district closes down.
So once, once the district closes down, they, they would go back to what they were getting before, uh, as a percentage?
They, you know, once they close it down, they would all see a big jump in their revenues that year. Um, with every dollar that was being collected by the urban renewal area now being split out fortunately to all of those overlapping taxes.
Do, do we say it goes for ten years, or twenty years, or thirty years? We, we say that, right? I mean, that's our decision?
Yes.
Elaine, you want to handle the intricacies of duration provisions?
So, um, duration is not required in the statute, but when Nick and I are working on these together, we use duration to try to give estimates of the amount of money that you can raise over a period of time. That's the only way that we can come up with a maximum indebtedness for you. So some, some communities say, no matter what, we don't want to go more than twenty-five years. And so we'll do our estimate for that. There is no guarantee that you'll reach your maximum indebtedness in twenty-five years. We make a financial projection. So some cities have put a duration provision in their plans that says that at the end of twenty-five years, we're done. And what we've been able to do is awesome and that, that's all we need to do. Where other entities get to that twenty-five years and they say, well, we've got to really continue another five years to reach our maximum indebtedness. So the, the duration issue is something that we would talk to you about and see how you wanted to approach it. But we use duration not as a li, a limit unless you decide to. We use it as a guideline for trying to figure out what that maximum indebtedness is. If you do a ten-year district, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't really work at all because, um, you can't create enough increment because it works so slowly, that three percent growth over time. Unless you have a big new construction project, you can't really create enough value in an area to do significant projects. So it would really only work for a housing urban renewal area where you are paying money on the back end of every house that's built. Um, you, you could do a much shorter term, uh, term of an urban renewal area. That kind of an urban renewal area that functions off of that actual house being built and incentive being paid to the property tax, um, to the builder or developer. Nick, you want to add more or?
Yeah, I'd say ultimately it is entirely the town's decision. Almost any question you come up with, it's going to be at the discretion of the town, what you want to do. Um, and that's true with the duration as well. Um, it's just that there, there is no legal requirement for there to be any duration at all. But if you choose to put a duration provision in, then that's, that's completely up to you. In the absence of a duration provision, you just have the maximum indebtedness and you collect tax revenue as long as it takes to hit that maximum indebtedness, which may be fewer or more years than we would estimate upfront.
Sir, is there any more questions while we're done?
No, I don't, I'm just going to bring up something that I want.
So you guys got this? I can give you a test, please.
Are they going to stay on the line and move this for the rest of it?
Um, no, we were going to let them go.
Okay.
If, if there's nothing else, um, from you councils, then Elaine and Nick, thank you so much for coming and explaining this for such a thorough preparation for us. Um, if we, as we move along and, and what the council wants to do, we'll be in touch. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, um, we can take a, a little break here.
Okay.
I, I had planned for fifteen minutes, but, um, we can do five. And then, um, we'll turn the time over to Ginger for me. So why don't we take a five minute, five minutes, ten minutes, what do you guys want?
So Alyssa will not, Alyssa and, um, Denise and Scott will not be on until five.
Okay.
Does that help with your timeline?
Yep, we'll be back, we'll break until five o'clock. A bridge economics and it's your opportunity, Ginger.
All right. So, um, there's Alyssa. I think Denise will be in her car, so we won't get to see her, but we might be able to hear her. So we just wanted to, um, formally do a presentation to the town council, the mayor, and, um, town staff about our, the, uh, downtown planning project reports that LCP has facilitated in the community over the last few months. We are coming towards the realization of getting the report done, the final report. It's still in draft format. Um, we do have, there's two or three pieces to it. One of them was, uh, the feasibility study that Nick Popenoff did for the downtown urban renewal or the TIP um, that now you all have, um, and it's all in one whole piece with the, the housing, um, urban renewals for you guys to consider. So you, you have that piece now, um, to do with what you need to do. And, uh, there's another piece here called the, uh, it's a draft of the downtown action roadmap. And it's basically taking out of the formal report everything that came across, um, that looked like there were things that the community and the downtown businesses and the partners that had been involved, the chamber and the town, et cetera, that would be reasonable and feasible to try and accomplish over the next five years or so in the downtown area. So it's split into three sections, um, and, or areas of focus. The first one being to, you know, do things that will attract customers. The second one to build storefronts and the third one to build community. And I'm not going to go through all of this, um, right now. It, but we wanted to highlight some things out of a overview, uh, that we feel are important. And we did meet with, um, Michelle last week and we did have a conversation about this. And we have made, we've got some, some suggestions about, um, and the areas of, uh, that the town would be a lead organization on and that LCP would be a lead organization on. And we still have some drafting to do on other things and some priorities. But we did come up with three priorities and we'll talk for each one of us to look at, to be the lead organization for, and we'll talk about that a little bit. Um, Alyssa, where did you want to come in? Do you want me to go into those three areas or do you want to do that when you are doing your part?
Yeah, you're.
We can't hear you.
Why, why don't you go ahead, I, I, why don't you go ahead and give your present, your overview?
Okay.
Uh, then I can stop with it.
That sounds great. Thank you. So you all have a copy of this and, um, you'll see that, uh, there's, there's, uh, things and we've split it up into one, two, three, four to five years. And what we wanted to, uh, recommend for the town is to look at prioritizing over the next year, beginning the processes for the water system because that's so integral to, and the three things that we're going to talk about here are really integral to, um, attracting businesses, to keeping businesses, to, um, uh, attracting, uh, tourism, which seems to be becoming something that is really important to, um, our town and, and is getting easier and easier all the time. We have so many, uh, recreational opportunities and our, obviously our community, without saying, is really interested in having the water, um, as a priority and broadband. And, uh, more, more, uh, broadband opportunities, most especially become, becoming redundant so that when we have failures in the system, we can come back up a lot quicker. And, and the town is really moving quickly, uh, along with, in partnering with the county on making that a reality. And then, uh, also looking at the, the town codes and doing the code review. And it sounds like that's going to be coming along too and probably can be accomplished within this next year. The other two are obviously going to be things that are ongoing, but we can get a good start on it. And the three things that LCP has voted on at their board meeting last night to accept, um, as priorities for the organization to assist the community in facilitating are a downtown cleanup. And that would be, um, in conjunction with what the town has already started. But to focus, we would be focusing on the downtown area. And I think that the Lakeview, um, cleanup that happened last year was, you know, looking at, at, um, the entire community. And then the second thing is that we began to, through the Brownsville project and probably looking at getting some help from some other, um, agencies is starting to look at the Hereford building and, um, trying to save that because that's really one, that's one building that we don't want to lose. We have sort of talked about how we, we lost the courthouse many, many years ago. And, uh, we can't really afford to lose another building of that size and, um, significance in our community. So the, we have already started with permission from John Hogar, the owner of the building, into, um, the EPA Brown Fields Assessment Process and, uh, Phase One has started. That will take some time for the DEQ and the EPA to do their thing with that. And then, um, the, all the reports, then we'll go into the assessment or the Phase Two Assessment where testing goes on. And, uh, so it'll take some months for all of that to happen. But in the meantime, we can start looking at, um, making a, some sort of a plan to go. making a, some sort of a plan to go forward with that building. And while we won't be the one that's doing everything, we certainly are willing to be the facilitator of all of that. We also want to, uh, really address diversity and inclusion in our community, and we have, uh, burgeoning, we have a, a good, uh, group of Hispanic-owned, uh, businesses, restaurants, and other types of businesses that could, um, have, are beginning to look at, uh, what their needs are, and we would like to be able to support that effort, along with, um, businesses that are owned by women and other diverse groups. So, we want to really take a look at that and see what we might be able to, um, assist them with. So, that's kind of the overview that I wanted to do about this particular document. I also wanted to say, you know, and, and I, I really understand, there's been a lot of frustration about, over the years, about plans and projects that, um, get written up, and then they go on the shelf, and nothing happens with them. We have the opportunity to move forward over the next three years and continue to use this document as a living document, and where we need to change it and update it, we can, so that we can actually put some implementation plans together for what we have started and, uh, see them through. And that doesn't mean that everything will get done, because things happen along the way, but we really are dedicated to making this a plan that's going to have some realistic expectations and, uh, a simple, you know, as simple as possible, um, ways of making them come true. So, uh, I wanted to make sure they understand this. You will see this document many times over probably in the future, and it will change, um, as things get accomplished and as our needs are more flushed out. So, Alyssa?
No, that, that's a great overview, Ginger. I think the only thing I'd add is just explaining that full report, that figure thirty, thirty-five page report. The background behind that is, that's pretty much your findings. So, really explaining, your downtown is critical for economic development. Um, that's a key point we just wanted to stress in terms of, I think that was some of the appropriate questions that came out, um, in community engagement. Why are we doing plan? Why does, why do we need to focus on downtown? And so I think it's important to understand that your downtown is critical for economic development going forward. So, now that we've seen the, the positive impact, I think, for more rural communities like Lakeview and Burns and Jopay is, remote workers now understand there's an opportunity to be somewhat beautiful and live somewhat differently, still have their job. So, that's why we really emphasize broadband, but the other element is making Lakeview distinct, right, and really compelling, and you have those assets already with your downtown and the surrounding, um, landscape, but how do you improve on that even further, not just for those remote workers, but for your community itself? So, I think that's what's really important we wanted to stress, is your downtown is critical for economic development. The other thing is, you need a plan to go get grant dollars. Anyone giving you grant dollars wants to see that there's documented data, community engagement, and support, and there's rationale behind applying for the grant dollars. It's usually challenging to get those grants if you don't have them in place. So, that's the other purpose behind that document, is to position you, um, to go after those different funding sources, such as the Oregon Main Street Program, or USDA, or, um, foundations, or foundations. So, that's why it's also an important document. But as Ginger said, my firm, myself, is a former practitioner of economic development. Implementation is key. So, what I always make sure you are provided is those immediate wins, like the cleanup, which we heard is so critical, it has immediate impact, but then that also, that longer-term Hareford building, right? So, you have the short and the long term to have those impacts, and then, um, that will build out. So, we wanted to keep it, um, in, I guess we could say bite-sized. So, the roadmap's big, it encompasses everyone's ideas, but as Ginger presented, what are those first three things that LCP is going to do, what she indicated? So, that's the only thing I would just add to that, is the purpose of the two documents and why this, um, was created. But happy, any, if you have any other questions about maps or details?
Well, and one other thing that I would like to let you know is that we've had these documents for, what now, over a month, and what I've been doing is, uh, meeting with individuals that have been involved for the last two years while we've been going through this process. We started two years ago and kind of got sidelined a little bit with COVID and, and funding, uh, for the project and that sort of thing, but I've been going to individual businesses, building owners, um, and coming here to you folks who've gone to the county and done our presentation with them, and we're, we're asking for feedback. That's what these documents are for and, and why we, um, really want to, uh, do this work with you. So, if you have feedback, we really want to hear it. It's very important to us, and it will, you know, it will, all of the feedback is being incorporated and, um, considered for the semi-final draft, for the, especially for the, um, for the roadmap. Like I said, I sort of see that as a living document over time, but if you could do that for us, we'd really appreciate it. And we'd like to have the town's support for what we're doing with this, the facilitation that LCP is doing, and also, um, with the partnership with you folks with the three items for the prioritization for this coming year. And if you've got questions, we're happy to, to ask now, because we've got quite a bit of time.
So, how does it, uh, how does LCP and TIF go? I mean, do, do we get the money? Is Michelle, the, the town get it, give it to you, or how, or we, like, well, like, say on the, uh, the park, say, just say the park. So, we're a partner with you on, on that?
So.
That's the way it works, and then?
Okay.
I don't know, I, I.
Yeah, no. The city park, the, the town takes care of parks.
Right.
There shouldn't be a partnership on that. The town takes, solely takes care of those, they belong to the town.
Right, we know that, but what we want, I think the reason why that's there is to say that the, that LCP is willing to be a partner for helping with whatever it is that the town might see us, see fit for us to do. It doesn't mean that we own anything or that we have responsibility for the parks. But to get back to the initial question that Jay had, what we have to do with TIF, LCP and SCOA's, um, responsibility and/or interest in, uh, the TIF was only to do the feasibility study, just to find out if an urban renewal district in that downtown, downtown area was a good idea. Is it feasible? Does it, would it bring in enough revenue to, uh, make sense to even propose that something like that happened? So, we were looking for vehicles, or we are looking for vehicles or resources to help with the projects that are rolling out from what the, the work that we've done. So, we don't have, um, I mean, it's possible, I guess, because I don't, I mean, I'm not an expert on TIF for urban renewal. Um, Alyssa probably knows a lot more about it than I do, but we would not be responsible for, um, you know, doing anything with the money other than if there were projects within whatever boundaries or whatever you all decide, um, as a town with the urban renewal project, if there were something that, or you would have a grants process where it would be something where we would apply to do something with, you know, with the money, but other than that, uh, LCP would not have any, um, involvement in the actual, what do I want to say, financial, um, world of the, uh, urban renewal district. Alyssa, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I think I'll just add on both of those topics of the park and the TIF. So, you know, the whole point is to really show it is impossible for one organization to, um, enhance the vitality of the downtown. It takes many different partners coming on board to help the businesses. And so, what we wanted to do was aggregate all of the input, what we heard from the community, what we heard was important. And so, one of the themes that kept coming up over and over is, um, making the park accessible to families, skateboard park, and what we wanted to highlight is that is a critical asset to bring people downtown. So, when you're doing a new park design, when you're thinking about that, how does that integrate with the downtown? So, in, in theory, this plan, if you bring on a consultant to do a park design, to improve the park, they're looking at family-oriented, tying it to the downtown, and more holistically. LCP wouldn't maybe participate in those community meetings, but they have nothing to do with the park, obviously. That's the town's role. What we wanted to just really show is it's not just strictly a park, it's really also really critical for activating your downtown. So, that's the reason why it's in the plan. Um, regarding TIF, um, yes, LCP has nothing to do with the structure, the financing, the managing of TIF, that's certainly the town, and I know Nick and Elaine probably presented to that. However, communities across Oregon, numerous communities, one of the most successful programs using TIF is what's called storefront improvement programs, which is improving the outside of the buildings. And it's usually a 50% match to get the property owner on board to fix the awnings, fix the roofs, preserve those critical historic structures that make Lakeview so critical. So, in terms of TIF, what we identified in there is if it passes, we would strongly recommend that that tool is used. Think of, think of your historic buildings as construction. How do you help preserve those buildings? It would be up to the town ultimately, but we're putting that forward as a suggestion. Um, the other thing you can do, which is really successful in some communities, if you want to bring, say there's a cool restaurant in Bend, and they're looking for a second location, incentives to bring them here can be provided through TIF. So, we were just documenting some of those ways that TIF could be used to help, um, attract new investment downtown, which is what you want for TIF, right? The whole idea is to attract private investment to increase your property taxes.
Alyssa, there, there, a couple of them are talking about a grocery store. That always comes to the top.
Well, we put that in there, but that's such a, we put that in, I think that's the last action, I think, the town. I think we left that for you guys, so.
Right. Right. Any other questions? Or thoughts or discussion?
I, I would say that I agree that it takes more than one entity to be able to accomplish what we are all, our goal is, and we need to work together, all of us do, in, in it, you know?
Yeah.
Have that open communication, it's very important, you know, for that. Um, the more that I learned about the Brownfield study, you know, you're doing the, the pre-work for what we're wanting to have happen with our urban renewal, if that, if it goes that way.
That's true.
And, um, because we would be having to do that if it wasn't being done now.
Right.
You know, through the LCP. And I think that that's important for us to remember.
Well, actually.
We are community partners, and we need to be working together.
Yeah, the Brownfields project is actually through SCOA. I was involved with, when I was working at SCOA, I was a boots-on-the-ground person, and we just continued that for, you know, obvious reasons, um, when I moved over to LCP, and will continue, I'll continue to be involved. So, Denise, did you have anything that you would like to, oh, we, it looks like we lost her. Okay, that's okay. She probably went through a tunnel or something, I don't know. Um, any other questions? Your thoughts? Okay. Okay, you're welcome. Thank you, thank you.
Ginger?
Yes?
I'm looking at this map here.
Sure, yeah. The Golden Circle.
I'm going down through all of these, picking these out. And the one here, you've got proposed housing unit, which is the old mortuary.
Yeah, there was.
That is in the, that's not a residential building.
No, we, we know that.
It's an commercial building, and right now, I know there's some people looking at it, but it's also the dance studio where the kids are.
Right.
And what, what I'm asking you, if you want to change that, that, then you have to keep those kids out and put a house there.
No, we don't want to change it. It came up as a suggestion, I think, at some point, Alyssa, um, that there could be, we, we've talked about having some residential potential downtown like there was in the past, and to have some mixed use, because that tends to help revitalize your downtown. And that was one, that was a property that was, at some point, I know that the owners were looking at that, and we were just pointing out some areas, I think, in that map that could be potential. So, we, we would not do that. The owners of the property would have to decide that they were going to come to the town to do something like that. So, we would not be pushing any kids out of a dance studio at all.
Well, and that's, that's the point of the zone change right now, right, is what we're wanting to do is allow, give property owners more flexibility to allow housing to be there if they want. But Ginger's absolutely right. Because it's recommended to put flexibility to allow more uses, doesn't mean that any of those existing uses are going away.
Anything else?
I will say that the one thing I noticed that, being my family Reno and Sparks, when you see all those new buildings, they have businesses down underneath and apartments above.
Second story.
You know, announcing.
And we do still have several, if you guys do realize that, um, behind Thornton's, there's four apartments.
Right.
There's apartments across the street that Dave.
Yeah.
Rattata owns, there's apartments over here on the corner, there's like, I think, nine or 10 apartments up there. There's still apartments on East Street that are right at the beginning of the downtown area, so it's not a neglected field. It's just not as noticeable.
Right. Right. We just want to preserve that, because we think it really enhances the experience.
I don't think it's ever going to go away, because those people don't plan on changing that. They're already grandfathered in, so it would be silly to change something that's grandfathered in that you'll never get back.
Right.
Okay, anybody have anything else? Jay, you have anything? Okay, well, there is none. Is there any more on this?
They're good, they're good, as long as you have no more questions.
All right. If there's no more questions, anybody out here have any questions? Okay, there are none, then we'll adjourn the meeting at, uh, 5:27.